And served on several boards and commissions. He was truly a leader in our community, a dedicated family man, and will be missed tremendously by all who knew. Great big loss for us. Joe Keith passed away one week before Paul. He was the director of Parks and Recreation for the township for many years, a former state representative and active in our native Fatahama CYO. Pete loved to travel, spend time with his family, going over basketball, and we're all going to miss Pete. Quite fitting is they both kind of came through their careers, they usually got the lunch together a lot, because they're a week apart. Side, but it's amazing how that works out. But two good people, and if we could have just a moment of silence, we'll appreciate it. Thank you. Two good men. Okay. Let's go to public forum. We have Jen Calori and Pam.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, I'm Jen Calori, this is Dan Calori. We live at 500 Sutton Avenue in Pulsum, which is the corner of Fifth and Sutton. I'm here tonight to briefly discuss my own personal experience with the Marine Base located on Route 420 and Sutton Avenue. That was Sunday's front page of the Delaware County Times. Quite frankly, it was a little bit shocking to read. First, I will say, this is my own personal experience with the return of the Marines to this location, and is a totally separate view than what was published. I don't discredit the anonymous resident or the Delaware County Times journalism, and I respect both parties. Again, this is my own experience with the return of the Marines. To start, before the Marines returned to their base, a resident did collect a petition, and my husband and I did sign this. It was meant only in the event that commercial lighting or excessive loud noises would have foliage put in place, such as trees, to lighting and/or excessive sound. I don't feel at this time that that petition was signed is valid from my own perspective. I would like to request that if that's been presented to this committee, that my name and my husband's name be redacted. I feel that was prematurely done and not needed. I have not personally experienced or witnessed the Marines running their diesel trucks all hours of the night, our back porch is approximately 40 feet from the fence line to their property. I've only witnessed them working once from 7:45, 8:45 at night, and honestly, I mowed my lawn later than that. The trucks do need, it's a safety feature, but it's not all day, every day. I do work from home from time to time, and I can confirm that to be true. I also do have surveillance cameras, I did check them, which again, that's from, to support my statement, from our residents. My brother was a Marine, he was also a decent mechanic in the Marines, and I'm very familiar with these trucks. I have not today smelled exhaust from our resident. I know that they do have to start these trucks so often, as they need to be prepared at any moment's notice. I do know that they have to start these trucks, oh sorry, however, sorry. We have planted trees in our backyard also, and our neighbor has a partial PVC fence, which helps, not only for privacy, but it protects us from the sound from Route 420, to be honest. So we have no complaints with the noise or a smell coming from their location. And honestly, if there was any loud noises or smell, my youngest daughter would be the first one to point that out. My husband and I have lived here for almost 10 years in this location. We moved here knowing the Marine Base was there before us, and it's just steps from our home. We know the Marines are not a typical nine-to-five, and that if they do need to make some noise that they get their trucks ready, it's meant because they are going to handle something much bigger. We feel safer knowing that the Marines have returned to our Ridley community, and my family welcomes you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, my name's Ed Kettie, I'm currently the coordinator for the Tuishtas program in Delaware County. I've been working with the Marines for 12 years now, and I just wanted to say the amount of positive impact they have made on the community, not just here, but all of Delaware County. Over 10,000 children each year are supported by the Tuishtas program, and every year of these people have, you know, these men and women from that, not only the sacrifices they make with their time and all for the Marine Corps, but then on their own time they're doing this. I'm just, you know, here to say, you know, the positive impact that they have on the community, and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, we got, we're here from the Marines now. Captain Christopher Spiriton and First Sergeant Ashley Partey. All right, Christopher, did I say your name right?
Spiriton, Christopher Spiriton.
Sorry, I apologize.
Good evening, board, thank you so, so much for having us here, but also thank you to everyone that decided to come out. We just really appreciate the opportunity to introduce ourselves and let you know who your new neighbors are. So if you don't mind, do mind if I address. You know, leadership's all well and good, but it's, it's the people, the same, Marine Corps views it the same way, it's the Marines that make the mission. So we're very, very grateful to be here, not just this evening, we're so grateful to be back in this country. My name is First Sergeant Ashley Partey, I've been in the Marine Corps for 18 years now, and I am a born and bred Pennsylvania girl. You know, come from good work in farm stock, which made me successful in the Marine Corps, but I am very, very happy to be back in my home state. I've been all over the world, and been very blessed for the Marine Corps for that opportunity, but the last two years I spent in Moscow, Russia, on embassy security. I was the lead for the military security for the US Embassy in Moscow. And it was a very long, stressful two years, and I can't tell you how proud I am to be back, not just in this country, you know, to have people be thankful for my service, but also to be back in my home state, which I haven't been able to do since I was 18 years old. I am here with my boyfriend, John, we just moved to the area, and we're really, really grateful for everyone that's taken the time to welcome us and been so kind. Jen, thank you so much, that was extremely sweet, and you're going to ruin my tough Marine reputation, give me a, give me a here and there. But we're just really, really grateful, and I'm going to let Captain Spiriton introduce us.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board members. Captain Christopher Spiriton, I was actually born in Upper Wabu, United Arab Emirates, and I moved to the United States when I was eight years old. I ended up going to school in Rhode Island and graduated in 2014. Shortly later, I ended up joining the Marine Corps. And so, to reiterate what First Sergeant's been saying, you know, the United States has been great for me as an immigrant, Arabic's my first language, and so I've been immersed in the patriotism of the country, and so I'm really proud to be serving. I was in California for the last six years. I was serving at Combat Logistics Battalion 13 as a landing support platoon commander, and then as a maintenance management officer, and then as a logistics officer. And then from there, I ended up going to another assignment, still in California, Weapons of Field Training Battalion, where they make recruits and they actually train and get their rifle qualifications and field craft from there. So up until then, I was on the West Coast, this is my first time back on the East Coast, and I'm just really happy to be here, closer to home in Massachusetts, and being able to go visit some family, because that's quite a far distance. I am married as well. Lauren, she's still in California, we're trying to wrap up a couple of things there, and she's very excited to come over to Pennsylvania and join us here. Really appreciate your time, I'd like to just give a quick explanation of what it is the reservists do, and what we're here to do in the mission. Jen, you did a, you did a great job of hitting some of those points. We're really there to ensure the readiness of the reservists, we're there to ensure, at a moment, something happens unprecedented, that we're able to respond, and so that's our, that's our job there. We apologize if it may be inconvenient, but you're right, there are things we have to do with the vehicles. Our unit specifically is responsible for the transportation, which is why you see many trucks there, and they do require maintenance. We're going to do our best to, you know, keep it to consideration everybody's perspective, however, we will do what we need to do when it comes to making sure that the reservists are prepared in the chance that, you know, they have to get out the door as fast as possible. And so I'll turn it over to First Sergeant to kind of continue on that.
With my experience, I have two combat tours in Afghanistan, and John has three combat tours in Iraq, and we remember those post-9/11 days, where no one ever expects a September 11. But that's the entire purpose of the reserves, and our job as active duty members is to ensure that they are ready at all times when the nation needs them. So just to give anybody that doesn't have any military family or background or anything, just kind of a concept to understand what the reserves do in that aspect, but we're really looking forward to getting integrated with the community. We're going to have one of our trucks down for a trunk or treat, and get some costumes on, and we really look forward to being a part of this community. So on behalf of, thank you so much. No, sir, actually, we are a new unit, so previously, there was a bridge company there, and they were disbanded, and this unit moved from Evansburg, Pennsylvania, in Western PA, over here, and it's a truck company with 25th Marines.
So you worked a division that lost two soldiers?
No, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ray Bonney.
Good evening, everyone. I've been here before, you all know him, the guy that has the project that someday is going to happen, and there could be a lot of information here, Murray Coop, and so forth, if you move a bunch of trees in the back. But when, my neighbors keep getting, gee, when are they going to do this, when are they going to do this? And I said, well, you know, they said they were going to do this, but I don't have a date.
Right, we're waiting for your tomatoes to get though. We're waiting for your tomatoes to get though.
Do you want to use their real tomatoes? It'll take three weeks.
That's partly not true, that is partly not true, we were kind of, they had two projects starting the township, they started on one on nine avenue, and to be honest with you, whatever it is, your garden, but materials are coming in, and yeah, two to three weeks it should be.
I'm going to pick the next tomatoes.
Are you serious, part of it wasn't tomatoes?
We didn't, we didn't, we had a really big garden background.
And you didn't bring any up here for the meeting?
Oh, I should have.
Yeah.
But they have started, really, you said, they started clearing.
Yeah, I'm starting to clear, the only thing I have left is a little pair of tomatoes.
They won't be starting by next week. I think we're safe to say that.
Yes.
You're saying three weeks. Okay, I'll go, I'll tell my neighbors, we're going to party.
Once we have an exact date, we'll provide notice, or Shannon will provide notice to the neighborhoods, they don't know when exactly when, but at this point, that's a good time for it.
Okay, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now you guys are really testing me. Bill?
Brogan Senior.
Bill Brogan.
Good evening. I'm a 55-year resident of Black Rock Road, and I would like to thank you for including my son Billy in the banner program. I've never been this proud to be presently on the train, and I've been very sorry, tough guy, but this is my world today. Thank you very much, and Patty, thank you. I appreciate everything you did.
We appreciate everything you did.
I'm sorry I sounded like a little child. No worries.
You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I can't say your first name, John here?
James, John here, sir.
James?
Go ahead, please. Thank you so very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, as I said, my name is James Michael Gunhugh Jr., I reside at 2644 Armstrong Avenue in Holmes, Pennsylvania. I'm here tonight to discuss with you the federal monies that we got from the federal government, the $3.2 million. I have to say that most of the appropriations that I've seen, I agree with, so congratulations on that. However, as my math skills render me to the positive, I believe your records indicate that you have spent $2 million. I'm here to ask you if you have any updates as to the remaining $1.2 million that came from the federal government.
Yes, there's ongoing sewer projects that are going to be done with that money, there's ongoing community projects that are going to be done, that'll be added to the list.
So all that's...
We have to the end of 2024 to obligate the money.
So the appropriations have already been made, sir, is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
So we have to the end of 2024 to obligate the money, so we will be obligating more of it next year, as we do the projects.
Very good, sir, thank you very much for your information, I appreciate that. The next thing I have today is actually a statement to Commissioner McMenn. Commissioner, you might as well instruct the Traffic Maintenance Department to withdraw stop signs both north and south at the intersection of Armstrong Avenue and Brighton Terrace. There is zero compliance with these stop signs in either direction, zero. And I should tell you also that, and I ran the math, you're 68% of the people who enter this intersection, don't even slow down. That's all I have to say this evening. Thank you very much, folks, I appreciate your time.
Unfortunately, that's not uncommon throughout the township, the stop signs, people don't know, it's all our people, we have people who live there.
I just wanted to...
It's a terrible thing, if people...
I just wanted to bring it to attention of the guys.
Not okay.
Very much aware.
And as we put police officers there, it's all the neighbors going through the stop sign.
And they're not.
So we're going to keep, yeah, we're going to keep doing it, and we'll keep an eye on those, I'll get somebody out there to take a look at that.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
See anyone else for public forum? Seeing none? We move into management report, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. President. First thing I have is lease agreements with the Ridley School District. A referral was requested, tenured to two leases with the Ridley School District. One is updating our existing community center lease, the other is a lease to allow the school buses to park on township-owned property on Sellers Avenue across from Spring Hill Suites Hotel. The lease is reciprocal, so no rent will be paid by the township going forward to the community center, which we now pay, and no rent will be paid by the school district from the bus line. So it's a win-win for everyone with this arrangement. I need a...
I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion just to say that.
First, I made a secondhand question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next thing on the agenda is October 28th, we have our trunk or treat event. This is just an informational item, the Commissioners and Police Department will be hosting our trunk or treat event on Saturday, October 28th. Gates open at 1:30 PM, and all cars must be in place by 2:00 PM. That's a, it's a safety issue, we can't have cars moving in and out once the kids are out and about. The event runs until 3:00 PM. Registration opens Wednesday, October 4th, at 10:00 AM on the Township website at www.ritletownship.org, and will close when all slots are filled. Detailed information is on our website and our social media, and as I heard, we're happy to have the Marines sort of kind of come with one of their big trucks decorated, I'm sure the kids are going to love to climb all over that. A few adults too.
I think you might have one Township manager on the...
Only if I can drive.
Please do like the review.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. You cite on the report, Mrs. Merrill Sack.
Thank you, Mrs. Sack. Trash collected in August was 1,302.56 tons, recycling collected in August was 178.10 tons. We collected 12 TVs in August through our television monitor recycling program. Shredding Community Day, the Commissioners will be hosting our annual community shredding day this Saturday, September 30th, from 9:00 to 11:00, rain or shine, here at the Ridley Township Building. The event is free for Township residents, bring any documents you no longer need that contain personal information, such as social security numbers, credit card numbers, canceled checks, bank account information, et cetera. Just drive up, and we will help unload your items in the shredding truck. That's it.
Thank you. The Charles Report, Mr. Brett Sore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need a motion this evening to approve the 2024 Police and Non-Uniform Minimum Municipal Obligations, or MMO. The Police MMO for 2024 is $764,007. The non-uniform MMO is broken into two parts, the PMRS is $931,248, the union portion is $93,537, for a total non-uniform MMO of $1,024,795. The total obligation is $1,788,802.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Motion made, the second, any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
So this was reported, Mr. Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to give an update, I received an email from the attorney for the applicant for the intermunicipal liquor license transfer, it was for E4712, it was provided with evidence that there were withdrawal in that application, and I received that from John Rogers, who's their attorney, September 14, 2023.
Thank you. And Neil's report, Mr. Tany.
As I said, my name is James Michael Gunnery Jr. and reside at two six four four Armstrong Avenue in Holmes, Pennsylvania. I'm here tonight to discuss with you the federal monies that we got from federal government, the three point two million dollars. I have to say that most of the appropriations that I've seen, I agree with. So congratulations on that. However, my max goes rendering me to the positive. I believe your records indicate that you have spent two million dollars. I'm here to ask you if you have any updates as to the remaining one point two million dollars that came from the federal government.
Yes, there's ongoing sewer projects that are going to be done with that money. There's ongoing community projects that are going to be done. They'll be added to the list.
So all of that's.
We have to the end of twenty twenty four to obligate the money.
So the appropriations have already been made, sir? Is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't say that. So we have to the end of twenty twenty four to obligate the money. So we will be obligating more of it next year as we do the projects.
Very good, sir. Thank you very much for your information. I appreciate that. The next thing I have today is actually a statement to Commissioner McMenney. Commissioner, you might as well instruct the traffic maintenance department to withdraw stop signs both north and south at the intersection of Armstrong Avenue and Brighton Terrace. There is zero compliance with these stop signs in either direction, zero. And I should tell you also that I ran the math. There's sixty eight percent of the people who enter this intersection don't even slow down. That's all I have to say to you. Thank you very much, folks. I appreciate your time.
Unfortunately, that's not uncommon throughout the township. The stop signs, people, it's all our people, people who live there.
I just wanted to.
It's a terrible thing.
I just wanted to bring it to attention of the governor.
Okay. Very much aware. And as we put police officers there, it's all the neighbors going through the stop sign.
And there are no.
Yeah, that's all we're going to keep, yeah, we're going to keep doing it and we'll keep an eye on those. I'll get somebody out there to take a look.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Seeing anyone else for public forums? Seeing none? We moved in management report, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. President. First thing I have is lease agreements with the Ridley School District. A referral was requested to enter into two leases with the Ridley School District. One is updating our existing community center lease. The other is a lease to allow the school buses to park on township's own property on Sellers Avenue across from Spring Hill Suites Hotel. The leases are reciprocal, so no rent will be paid by the township going forward to the community center, which we now pay, and no rent will be paid by the school district from the bus line. So it's a win-win for everyone with this arrangement.
I need a. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion just a second.
Motion made, secondhand question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next thing on the agenda is October twenty eighth, we have our trunk or treat event. This is just an informational item. The commissioners and police department will be hosting our trunk or treat event on Saturday, October twenty eighth. Gates open at one thirty PM and all cars must be in place by two PM. That's so, it's a safety issue. We can have cars moving in and out once the kids are out and about. The event runs until three PM. Registration opens Wednesday, October fourth at ten AM on the township website at www.ridleytownship.org and will close when all slots are filled. Detailed information is on our website and our social media. And as you heard, we're happy to have the Marines who are going to come with one of their big trucks decorated. I'm sure the kids are going to love to climb all over that. A few adults, too.
I think we might have one township manager on the.
Only if I could drive.
Please do like the key.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do you cycle or report? Mr. Merrill Sack.
Trash collected in August was one thousand three hundred and two point fifty six tons. Recycling collected in August was one hundred and seventy point ten tons. We collected twelve TVs in August through our television monitor recycling program. Shredding Community Day. The commissioners will be hosting our annual community shredding day this Saturday, September thirtieth, from nine to eleven, rain or shine, here at the Ridley Township Building. Event is free for township residents. Bring any documents you no longer need that contain personal information such as social security numbers, credit card numbers, canceled checks, backup information, et cetera. Just drive up and we will help unload your items into the shredding truck. That's it.
Thank you. Charles, report, Mr. Brett Sore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need a motion this evening to approve the twenty twenty four Police and Nonuniform Minimum Municipal Obligations, or MNO. The police MNO for twenty twenty four is seven hundred and sixty four thousand and seven dollars. The non-uniform MNO is broken into two parts. The PMRS is nine hundred and thirty one thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars. The union portion is ninety three thousand five hundred and thirty seven for a total non-uniform MNO of one million twenty four thousand seven hundred and ninety five dollars. The total obligation is one million seven hundred and eighty eight thousand eight hundred and two dollars. I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Special report, Mr. Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just given update, I received an email from the attorney for the applicant for the intermunicipal liquor license transfer. It was for E four seven one two. It was provided with evidence that they were withdrawing that application. And I received that from John Rogers, his attorney, September fourteenth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you. Engineers Department, Mr. Canyon.
Thanks, Mr. President. certificates for consideration must go sports leading for the not field D C N R grant, one hundred and sixty two thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars. Battlefield Enterprises for the liquor road school repair, four thousand three hundred dollars. And Adenazio Contractors for climber lane alley drainage improvements, change order and a payment in the amount of fifty one thousand eight hundred and forty six dollars and twenty five cents. And Adenazio Contractors change for the Pemvess improvements, changes and payment in the amount of seventy thousand fifty one dollars and eighty six cents. And Adenazio Contractors for area sewer maintenance projects, twenty one thousand ninety dollars. Joseph J. Danielle LLC for Amos Land Road eighty eight curb cuts, twenty eight thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents. Joseph J. Danielle LLC for the seventh avenue school repair, three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. And more construction services for the Armstrong Avenue school repair, eleven thousand seven hundred and two dollars and twenty seven cents.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Fifth titulation of bids for the Ballack Mack Avenue Playground Accessibility Improvement. See the community development block grant for this work. Bids were opened on September twenty first, received three bids. Going to recommend award Premier Concrete Incorporated Brew Mall in the low bid amount ninety eight thousand eight hundred dollars, subject to the solicitors' review.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The Kinder Park Phase Work Cooperative Agreement. As part of the Housing Authority's redevelopment capital program grant, closeout requirements, the township was asked to adopt a resolution supporting the Delaware County Housing Authority and its developers in redeveloping and revitalizing housing at the apartment location on Bulans Lane.
Any motion?
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Field maintenance program. Received three proposals for the turf management at several of our athletic fields. We have a low bid, a co-stars low bid from a company called Winview Athletic Fields and recommend award to them for the, this year, for the fall application of twenty three thousand two hundred dollars. And for next year for the municipal park and Black Rock Park, we have twenty seven thousand eight hundred dollars. And for the remaining fields for twenty three thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The Dunko Greenways Grant Resolution. The county has a Greenways Grant Program available, application period open. This is a resolution to make an application to the program for improvements in Liam Estates Park, for the area Little League improvements phase two.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Go ahead, thank you. Highway Sanitation Committee Department, Mr. Warwick.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be no trash collection. Residents are reminded there will be no trash collection on Monday, October ninth in observance of the Columbus Day holiday. The municipal offices will be open, just the public works department will be closed for the day. Also, the twenty twenty three curbside leaf collection. The Township's twenty twenty three curbside leaf collection program will begin in wards one, two, and four, the week of October thirtieth. We ask residents to place leaves in the curbed line grass area, not in the street. The full schedule will be available on our website and our social media pages. So, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ballinord, do you want to report?
Nothing to add.
Recreation Committee Report, Mr. McMenney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple things. Our annual fall festival was a great success. We had a huge crowd and beautiful weather. Thank you to all those who worked so hard to ensure a great day. Special thanks to the sponsors of the event, along with our Ridley Township Board of Commissioners. The sponsors were Shore Power, TD Bank, Astound, County Savings, Smile Exchange Springfield, and Vibe Urgent Care. Up next is our trunk or treat event being held on Saturday, October twenty eighth. Our Christmas tree lighting will be held on Tuesday, December fifth, and the rain date for that will be December sixth. Both events are being held on the ground at the Ridley Township Municipal Building. See our website and Parks and Recreation Facebook page for details. And then I know that toys for tots, maybe two Marines come that night, too, but we'll also have the box in the hallway. Just let us know, can you answer? Also, I received a letter from the director of the state. Dear Bob, the Ridley Township Fall Festival held on September seventeenth, twenty twenty three was a huge success, as I stated before. This event was a tremendous undertaking and is not possible without the help and cooperation of the Ridley Township employees, as well the generosity of the sponsors that I mentioned. Our public works employees, Kevin Rogers, Mike McLaughlin, Will Haney, and Pat Brady, worked tirelessly to make the event a success. Whether it was stage construction, marking out the layout, hauling tables and tents, setting up, taking down or cleanup, it was done with energy and efficiency. Without them to do the heavy work, the fall festival could not be possible to be successful. Paul Dick of our code enforcement office arrived early in the morning to assist the many crafters vendors in finding their spaces and also served as auctioneer for the bike sale. Additionally, I want to commend Patty Brandis and Lynn Becker for helping with the bike auction. Finally, I want to acknowledge our dedicated Ridley Township Police Officers Association for providing the police car for the residents to check out and for giving out bags of snacks to the festival patrons and showing some of their great, their gear and equipment they use to perform their job so effectively. Children love that. These employees all clearly demonstrated dedication to and love of the Ridley Township community and are to be commended. We are very fortunate to have such committed Ridley Township employees that go over and above their job requirements to make sure that Ridley Township community has a great day at the festival. Thanks also to the continuous support of the board. That was from Sincerely Peg Webb, Director in Parks Recreation. I do have one last thing. As always, I would like to thank Denise and the guys down at the marina for another successful year. They do a great job down there and people love it. I show people, I work up in Oaks and I show the people, I say, where's that? What shore is that? But they keep it well, well groomed and we hardly, I don't think we have any issues. But they do a great job down there and it's a great access for the township.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Report. For the month of August, our police handled one thousand one hundred and seventy seven calls. Breakdown is as follows. Crumlin, one hundred and five. Folsom, two hundred and ninety five. Holmes, one hundred and thirty one. Melma Park, fifty one. Morton, fifty six. Ridley Park, one hundred and twenty six. C Kane, eighty. Swatmore, seventy seven. And Woodland, two hundred and fifty six. Captain, another busy month. Couple notes or highlights for everyone on the cards. On August fifth, Officer Simcox was on routine patrol in C Kane. This time observed a vehicle traveling high rate speed on South Avenue. When he turned his lights on, the vehicle accelerated to a do not enter sign and continued on C Kane Road. The pursuit ensued in several minutes of residential area before the suspect's vehicle struck a curb and finally stopped at Armstrong and Hudson. The suspect advised that he had fled because he had struck a vehicle in Springfield Township and did not possess a valid driver's license. Officer Simcox observed marijuana inside the vehicle and perceived and procured a search warrant. A large amount of marijuana, US currency, digital scales, and a discarded handgun were seized, as well as other related charges. Charges in Springfield are pending. So a great job by Officer Simcox. On August twenty sixth, Sergeant McDevitt and Detective Kearney learned of previous stolen bicycle from Folsom area being sold on Facebook Marketplace. Through investigation, officers were able to ascertain the identity and residence of the subject that absconded with the bike. The subject was contacted by police to arrange a meeting to purchase the stolen bike. At the meetup, the defendant was taken into custody without incident and charges were for receiving stolen property. The subject had several outstanding warrants. What did you guys do with the bike? Good job, though. Pays off you guys on Facebook. On September twenty first, Officer Judge was on routine patrol in the park section of township while on Chester Pike, the traffic stop was initiated on a motorcycle for displaying a registration plate on a wrong vehicle. The vehicle was also uninsured and the operator was suspended DUI related. Further investigation revealed the defendant to be in possession of methamphetamine and paraphernalia. Charges are pending. Never know where you're going to hit out there, right? Guys do a great job. Captain, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, it's that time of year and we're always looking for crossing guard. So anybody interested in the crossing guard, go to our website, call the township, call the police department, you know. What do you point to, Marines? They got help down here. I was marking. Anyway, we're looking for crossing guards. So a couple times a day, it's a few hours, take a few hours. So we really appreciate the support and keeping the kids safe. Hey, we have a secret public safety. Hulkenberg Department, Sir Seane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do I get a new vest or do I have to burn my old vest?
I thought you were retired. We'll give you a new one.
For the month of August, we had.
That's nice being commissioner volunteer, retire.
We had two hundred and fifty four permits issued, eight contractors registered, fifty three certificates of occupancy issued, twenty nine rental inspections, and sixteen health inspections. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Steering Committee, Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. President. We received a request to extend this period of time for board review and action from the applicant for the Wade Car Wash at fifteen thirty seven Chester Pike in Crumlin. The applicant intends to develop one point three nine six acres with a four thousand five hundred and seventy eight square feet car wash at this location. Their request is for an extension till December thirty first, twenty twenty three. I'd like to make a motion to approve this request.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion?
Question.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That would be a great addition to Chester Pike. It's like, if you don't know where it is, if you're down February, make a right on Chester Pike, it's on the right hand side, right through the Walmart. So I guess it was a higher place, front door, so everything's sort of activated and it's all.
It looked real nice.
Real nice.
I can get my car washed and get a cheeseburger.
As good as that.
What you do when you're retired, I guess?
Library and Research Center Committee Report.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Commons.
Mary Tobin, Assistant Director and Head of Reference, recently celebrated twenty five years at the library. She has overseen her effective much change, such as adding downloadable books, movies, and devices to the collection, transitioning to computer use for research, adding music and passes to the collection, online programming, and much more. Under her leadership, adult program attendance has grown from about one thousand one hundred to five thousand and ten years. Was Mary who brought the flyers to the library twice. Mary's known for her expertise, experience, and patience in helping Ridley residents who come to the library and need help. She is a true library celebrity. Eight thousand five hundred and seventy people visited the library in August and checked out or downloaded fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy one books and other items. Attendance at fifty six library programs in August was three thousand and seventy two people. Mary Beth Redden, volunteer on historical committee of Friends of Mount Moriah Cemetery, will give a lecture at the cemetery, October ninth, in person at the library. She will discuss the ongoing work to restore the cemetery and will also accept names of those buried in the cemetery for further research. Check our website for all our October classes and activities for all ages. W W W dot Ridleylibrary dot com. Thank you.
If you want to do a resolution for the twenty five years for. So you want to make a motion for a resolution?
I'd like to make a motion, too.
I'll second.
A resolution for them to celebrate the anniversary.
Motion been made and seconded? Yes. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else? Another great month with the library. Thank you so much for the services you guys provide.
Thank you all.
Great. Finance Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the approval of bills. All commissioners receive the list of this month's bills and I'd like to make a motion for approval of subject to control.
I'll make the motion. Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is that it? Okay, in the old or new business?
I'd just like to be changed on the list here. I'm tenth and following you and I have nothing to do.
Or you want to be twelve, thirteen?
I have nothing.
Miles Sack, there, anything?
Yes, I would just like to welcome Marines. Thank you. Thank you for everything you guys do and to the residents that came out to support them. Also, October seventh, Boston Fire Company will be having their Oktoberfest from seven to ten to four, rain date, October eighth.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to congratulate Mary again and I also would like to, the fall festival was wonderful, pegged, and all the township workers did a great job. I'd also like to recognize the library, the library staff, the library commander, and the friends for the library that did all the job. Thank you.
I'm good.
Notre Dame Awards School Carnival is this weekend, September twenty eighth and twenty ninth, so it's always a good time, so bring your kids out and get your cotton candy and that on and go fill it.
Just like to welcome Marines as well. Thank you and welcome to our neighborhood. Anything you need, we'll help you out. Thank you. I guess you're saying not everybody's against it anyway. Or, mercy to a jerk. Thank you for coming out.